All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Hartwell. This is the special meeting of the RTM Ways and Means Committee. For October the seventh. Let me put up the. Agenda. There we go. And so the beginning of the agenda is the roll call. So Mr. Black. Peter, you here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Josh, are you here? Mr. Brooks?
Present.
Mr. Heinz, are you here?
Here.
Great, thank you. Ms. Waterman is here, yes?
Here.
Here, and John Hartwell, who's the chair. Okay, thank you. We are here. We have a full house. And we also have with us this evening. Jim Finch, the Finance Director, who is shown as Grace on the screen. And we had Mr. Paluzzi. I think he's still here. Let's see his thing. Oh, there he is. Okay, got it. Right? It's the first time I've done this for an official meeting. All right. Item number two on the agenda says approve minutes from the September meeting. But I was informed that because this is a special meeting, we cannot approve minutes, nor can we have additional business at the end. So that's fine. It makes things a little briefer. So let's just jump into the next item on the agenda. To discuss ARPA and contingency appropriations, and if appropriate, consider the following transfers and resolutions. ARPA Fund Fiscal Year 2025 Resolution and Transfer. Resolved to recommend to the RTM that it considers, and if appropriate, approve an increase in the ARPA Fund budget from $7,710,500 to $8,185,500. This appropriation will be used to fund a grant to the Cochrane-Sonquist Post 83 of the American Legion. The transfer appropriates the grants while also transferring funds to the fueling station project. And the fund balance transfer in total is $475,000 in this first piece. The American Legion Post would get $50,000 of that, and they transfer out to the municipal facilities fund for $425,000. So that would be $475,000. Let's consider this piece first before we go to the other two pieces. Jim, would you like to tell us about?
Yes. At the prior Board of Finance meeting, the representatives from the American Legion Post came to the Board of Finance. They were looking for assistance, possibly through ARPA. They had admitted that they had missed the earlier process the town had set up, where funds were allocated through the various, to the various nonprofit groups, through the Branford Foundation. They identified some capital needs that are pressing, but they were unable to do that because of revenue loss. And so we're not necessarily, the Board of Finance isn't recommending any specific capital project. This is simply a $50,000 grant under the category of revenue loss. Then the Post can use it, you know, however they see fit with their other efforts. You know, possibly they may pay the parking lot, and there were some other building things that that they had also identified. And then the second piece is talking about reducing the amount of bonds that would be required for the fueling station project. For those that were on the prior RTM, we spent a lot of time talking about this project. Myself and Linda Erlinger had a long conversation for the benefit of all the members present. And really, because this is a, given the size of the project, a million one, you know, it's either a small bonded project or a large pay-as-you-go project. But the two things are really happening here. One is that, you know, we're coming to the end of either allocating ARPA dollars for either a purchase order or a contract, and then having them and trying to get them spent. By way of background, the town was allocated $8,257,021. And then with these items, with the $8,185,500, you know, that would leave us about $71,521. We're probably going to do some more cleanup of some of our appropriations at a future meeting. But the thought was, you know, this use of the fueling station is consistent with what will be considered general government services. And so that, along with the contingency dollars, are essentially reducing the amount that we would be bonding for this project. As a result, we're going to bond only $300,000. So that's considerably less than the million one that was authorized. It's something we've done in the past. We've had bond authorizations. The Indian Neck Firehouse would probably be a good example. And then some with the library as well. The $50,000 number is, if there is a market for this, is not out of whack. Madison, Connecticut, who, I don't know what they received in ARPA, but my guess is it would be less than what Branford received. They allocated in the high to mid 40s to, I believe it was their American Legion, and then some for their VFW as well. So we're certainly not out of the ordinary using the ARPA funds for this. And so with that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions.
Yeah.
Alisa.
Yes, Jim. So can you explain to me, so who owns the American Legion building? And what kind of, is it, you're seeing, is American Legion a nonprofit? Like, where do they fall in the whole kind of range of stuff, you know, organizations?
Well, they're not, they're nonprofit.
Okay.
You know, you know, like BACA and, you know, like the Chamber, I would say, they're also nonprofits. And, you know, I guess if you are looking for even some nexus to the budget, although, you know, it may not be the strongest. I mean, you might even consider this an element of, you know, public celebration and patriotic observance.
But who owns that building? Do they own that building that we're giving funds for renovation?
I don't, I didn't look at the land records for that. I, I'm assuming they do own it if they do building repairs. But that's obviously not a guarantee. You know, the parking lot isn't the building, but that's also another thing that they identified.
Jim, I believe they own the building.
I, I think so, but I just can't say with certainty that they own it, because I didn't, I didn't pull their.
Branford Point.
Yeah.
So they're coming with, like, the process that they, I know they came to the Board of Finance, but then do we need to understand we're giving ARPA funds for a building that we don't know if they own or not? Like, do we need to understand that before we provide funding for maintenance of that building?
Well, they also may use it on the parking lot as well.
Right. And that, who owns the parking lot? Like, like, I guess, would it be good to get some more information?
Well, what I could do is I could verify that with town clerks tomorrow, actually, so.
I could, hey, Jim and John, this is Pete Black. I mean, if you want to pass this for a minute, I can look up the land records online right now.
Oh, okay.
You know, if we want to, you know, my understanding is they own the building. They moved there when they sold or gave the town their building on Branford Point. And so I'll check that, but it's, you know, they're a nonprofit, but I like the Chamber. I think they, well, the Branford Community Foundation felt it self-limited to 503(c)(3) corporations. And I think this is probably, you know, 503(c) something else, or. You know, so I think there's a specific one for veterans organizations rather than educational, scientific, et cetera.
Yeah, you're right. There is.
Pardon?
There is a special 501 category for.
Okay. Okay, well, if we want to pass this for a minute.
That'd be great. Yeah, I just want to be sure if we're allocating money, that we know who, what we're, who owns the building, that I'd appreciate that.
All right. Well, that's obviously a significant question. You want to give money to people who are, in this particular case, if it's for renovations of a building or parking lots, you want to make sure you're doing it to someone who owns the building. Are there any other issues that people have with this particular grant?
John, this is Peter again.
Yes.
Just want to say, putting on my registrar voter's hat for a minute, this was one of the locations that was an alternate, had the Police Department moved into the firehouse prior to the presidential election. We may want to be using it for the municipal election next year. I don't know if we will or not, but that's a possibility. So there's a, you know, definitely a town interested in keeping this building maintained as well.
Certainly. I would think that if, if it's a backstop to the community, you know, the community room at the fire station, then yes, definitely it's likely to be used for the municipal elections. Josh, you have your hand up?
Yeah. Through you to Grace. What? So, before, I'm not, I'm all for the, for the American Legion. I have no issues with that. I'd like to just real quick talk about ARPA funding going to the fuel station. As you know, I'm kind of a proponent of trying to get, I'd love to see as much of the ARPA going into the community and the community-based organizations that sometimes struggle. And I think the American Legion is one of them. Are there, are there plans for the rest of the money to go to the municipality or to some of those organizations?
Well, Josh, actually, the Board of Finance did take a different approach. When the ARPA dollars were first appropriated, you may recall, if not, I could send it to you, there was a discussion pursuant to a memo I had written in terms of how to use the ARPA dollars. And because we had received less than $10 million, we chose the standard allowance. And the rules around the standard allowance were fairly broad, but when one reads the paragraph in the regs, those items are strikingly similar to what the town does in its operating budget. And so, so the thought was, however, you know, if we, you know, if we wanted to come up with some vehicle to assist nonprofits, you know, we were basically thinking at that time, for the nonprofits that, you know, that the foundation would serve, not necessarily the Chamber, which would be considered business and to some extent BACA Economic Development, which are both things that, you know, economic development is something we fund in the general fund budget as well. But basically, that, that's where we say about 95% of it should really kind of overlap with things that could be in a town budget. And so that's where the 5% came, and that's roughly where the 425 came up, which went to the Community Foundation for administering it, and $395,000 for the direct aid to the nonprofits. We do pay as you go capital projects in the operating budget as well. And like I said, probably at the beginning of the conversation, you know, this could be considered a large pay-as-you-go project or a small bonded project. The other thing too, Josh, I think the support to underscore is that, you know, we're looking to, you know, these dollars should be, you know, like obligated either through a purchase order or a contract by December 31st, 2024, and then spent by 2026. So the money that would go towards the fueling station, one would, would reduce the amount that would otherwise be borrowed and also help us in in, in meeting the spend down requirements of the regulations.
No, I get what you're saying, Jim, but we're in no obligation to spend 95% on the municipality. Maybe there was a want or a.
Yeah, it was a guideline, Josh.
A guideline, right.
Which we create, which we created ourselves, basically.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not questioning those that created it. I'm just coming from my, my point of view. And, and I think, you know, I, I do think that, you know, if we can find a way, even with the remaining balance, to get that into the community rather than, I think that has a larger impact in some ways than, than, you know, the way spending the last remaining dollars on municipal projects. That's just my opinion. And so my question still is, is there anything with the remaining about $75,000 to go into the community more so than into the municipality? And maybe that's a question for later, but if I don't ask it now, I'm going to ask.
Yeah, yeah. I would say it's unlikely that you're going to see any kind of something going directly into the community, you know, just can, you know, obviously, a lot of the stuff that the town does has a direct benefit to the community too. But in terms of funding a, another nonprofit, I would say probably not. I mean, I think one thing that was reduced out of the operating budget, we just haven't had the time to revisit or demo the product, was to come up with a, you know, some pension software, which, which was one thing that we had put in the budget and then taken out. But, so I would probably not try to give you a false hope that, of that remaining balance, that it's going to go to some nonprofit. Now, we do know that, that the Branford Interfaith Group had also sent a letter to the Board of Finance at their request, you know, verbally. We basically put that on pause. But I think Peter Semino and, and myself and Jamie will, might be proposing something a little bit different, using it, using existing ARPA dollars to, to help the Branford Interfaith Housing Corp. So in a way, you know, you could make the case that that is, is directly benefiting a nonprofit organization in town, but it's not using the $71,000 balance. All likelihood, it would use, it would be amending an existing appropriation.
Thank you, Jim.
Peter.
Yeah, I think, thank you, John. Yeah, I'd second Josh's feelings. My own feeling is that we didn't use enough of this money for nonprofits. And then by putting it through the Community Foundation, they limited it to the 403(c)(3). So, you know, that's just my, my feelings too. On the question of property ownership, from what I can find, the American Legion does own the property. It's not rented. It's owned. And that's been since 1980. Not all the land records go back. They don't have an online deed. They've owned it probably since the 80s or 70s or something like that, maybe '75. But I do find some other records referencing their property ownership there.
Great. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Chris, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I was just saying, I think they moved in around 83, 84 to that new building.
And in terms of using this money in support of the the facilities fund, do you have any questions on that?
No.
No. I also feel that money going directly into the community would be a good thing. At the same time, I like the idea of not having to bond as much money and, and basically taking free money and swapping that out for what we would have had to bond and pay for down the road. So I'm okay with that. And the, the American Legion, I, Jim, you said that they basically missed the deadline for, for getting in line for the the process that was already set up with the Community Foundation?
Yeah, yeah. And the reason I say that, John, is because they were asked by the Board of Finance that they had submitted an application to the Community Foundation. I think it was, I think it was Ed Masada from the Post who said, he said, we actually, we missed it, so.
Okay. All right, well, it's not something that would have happened every year anyway. So it's, it's, you know, one can understand it was a special operation. Do I hear any, any motion on this?
Yeah, John, this is Peter Black. I'll move to approve.
Okay. Wait a second.
Yep, second by Chris.
Second by Chris. Alisa, can I ask you to take some quick notes on this? You know, at least who did what to whom, because I don't have anything at hand. All right. So all in favor of this, this particular $475,000 transfer? Say aye.
Representative Black says aye.
Okay.
John, we should, just as a.
It's supposed to be roll call.
It's supposed to be a roll call on Zoom, and I guess in case there's somebody just phoning in, which there isn't, but.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Thank you for, for getting the nuances here. So Representative Black?
Representative Black votes aye.
Representative Brooks?
Representative Brooks votes aye.
Aye, okay. Representative Heinz?
Representative Heinz votes yes.
Representative Waterman?
Yes.
And Representative Hartwell, well, it's yes as well. So it's five to, five to nil. Okay. And the bird is still there. All right. Moving on to the next one. General Fund Fiscal Year 2024 Transfer. Transfer moves contingency dollars into the fueling station project of $275,000. So out of contingency and into this same municipal facilities fund where we just placed $425,000. Do we need more consideration on this one? Or have we talked this one through as well?
What, John, this is Peter again. What are, I thought we just moved the whole of item three, but maybe not.
Oh, no, we did not. I'm sorry. I, I was thinking that we take these three pieces separately, because there, there are different things going on there.
Okay, if you want a motion for the second, the transfer of the 275, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, please. Yeah.
I'll, I'll move that.
Okay. Can I get a second for that one?
I can second.
Alisa will second that. Okay. Jim, can you talk to me for a moment about the contingency fund that this money is coming from as opposed to the ARPA? This is not from ARPA. This is the contingency money.
Right, right.
How much contingency money is there? And this is from fiscal year 2024, right?
Correct, yep.
And so that's the year that just closed out.
It's closing out, yes, yep.
Well, yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, basically, it's a similar type thing, right? So there, there was a, so going into this meeting, there was about a million two left in contingency. You know, we didn't have any bad storms. We still had contracts that needed to settle, and there weren't any other sort of, you know, crazy, you know, crazy, but, but emergency issues that, that we would typically budget the contingency for. And so as Peter Black has said over the years, you know, it is, by taking it from contingency, it's not flowing into the, into the fund balance. And so you may recall, so, so basically, that's what we're doing. We're saying, all right, well, let's, let's, you know, because we know that the fund balance is healthy, we're still waiting for the Board of Finance to come up with a, a fund balance target policy. We know that if we had to settle contracts and pay the retro, you know, we're going to, we'll, we'll appropriate that at a fund balance. So, so what we're doing is we're using, you know, contingency dollars, which are general fund, regular tax dollars, which would normally fund a pay-as-you-go capital project. And like I said, with this one, it could be considered a large pay-as-you-go project or a, or a small bonded project. And so, again, this one, the 275 is again, part of that debt reduction. Also, since we're talking about contingency at that Board of Finance meeting, $500,000 was appropriated out of contingency for the, into the Vehicle Apparatus Fund for the firehouse. They had asked for a million dollars. The board and the RTM also approved $500,000. We said we would revisit it when we saw how the year would end. And then the ambulance fund was, was going to be short on, on one of the mounting projects. And so the board appropriated $15,000 from there at the last meeting, Board of Finance, that is. Also, one of the items that Alex will be speaking to later, $70,000 for the, the trenching and electrical work for footpark and the tennis courts at Vets. And then, and then less than $6,000 for overtime in the finance department. With all of that, there's about $352,000 that's left in contingency. So that's, that's kind of where contingency is falling between now August and September.
Okay, thank you. And just, you mentioned a couple of times a large pay-as-you-go or a small bonding project. Where are those limits or, or parameters in your mind, just?
Yeah, in your mind is, in my mind is probably a good way to phrase it, because there's nothing, it's officially written down, John. So basically, what, what we've said historically is projects that, you know, I mean, it depends on the year, certainly, but usually the million dollars was kind of the threshold, and it's arbitrary, so.
For pay-as-you-go?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes you could do those at a couple of years as well, you know, like you might build money up, but, but in this case, you know, the other, the other aspect about this is, and it wasn't a huge amount of dollars, but, you know, some of the stuff that went into it was stuff that we would fund out of the general fund. Like, for example, you, you know, you build a fueling station, what do you have to do? You got to fill, you got to fill the tank, right? So, so that's all part of the project too, because you got to make sure the pumps work. So just, just got to give you a little, little example there, but.
Right. Okay. Anyone else have any questions about this particular $275,000? No? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Representative Black?
Yeah, Representative Black votes aye.
Representative Brooks?
Representative Brooks votes aye.
Representative Heinz?
Heinz votes yes.
Representative Waterman?
Yes.
And Representative Hartwell does the same. Okay, the last piece here is $700,000 from bond proceeds, again, for the fueling station. So we haven't bonded this yet, have we?
No. And, and basically, so, so what, what that is, it's not, in this case, you're not actually moving cash proceeds. You, you're basically reducing the budget for bond proceeds. So this is, these are budget adjustments. So, so initially, you'd have a million one budgeted for bond proceeds. Now you're reducing it by 700,000.
Got it. Okay. And that 700,000 is the 475 and the 275 that we were just moving around?
Yeah, the 425 and the 275, yep.
Okay, all right. This is much clearer to me now than it was when I first looked at it. So this has been very helpful. Does anyone else have any questions on this final piece?
Wait a second. Oh, so.
Alisa, yes, please.
Um, wait, so, so let me understand. So a bond proceed means, I mean, that it was already, the fueling station was already approved for bonding? Means, I mean, that it was already, the fueling station was already approved for bonding. And so basically, we're moving many into a bonding fund, so it doesn't need to be bonded, is that what you're saying?
Well, basically, the municipal facilities fund. Uh, a lot of those projects are are funded with bonds, they're also funded with grants. Uh, they're also funded with, uh, at times, uh, you know, dollars from uh. From other sources. Uh, I think I gave uh two examples of. Uh at least one, I think probably in my letter, was was the firehouse. Some years ago, we had a bond authorization, uh and we ended up not bonding it. Uh, we ended up using uh. You know, tax, residual tax dollars, I I don't recall exactly if it was fund balance or not, but. You know, that that would be an example. So when when the project, Alyssa, was originally uh approved. So you had an expenditure budget of a million one, and you had a bond authorization of a million one, so essentially. You were budgeting a million one in bond proceeds. Now, I think sometimes, I'm guilty of this, using the term interchangeably. Uh, when I answer John's questions, it's the budget for bond proceeds, they're not actual. Actually realized until the actual debt is issued. So uh, and and we are still going to be issuing some debt for this project, just not all of it, so we're gonna be. Issuing uh three hundred thousand dollars uh later this month, when the bond sale in October occurs. Uh, and those bonds will mature over over ten years, tho- tho- those will be. You know, thirty thousand a year for ten years, so uh gi- given the nature of that type of project, so.
Okay, so it's not really bond proceeds.
It's not cash, it's a, it's a budget for bond proceeds, basically.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Yep.
Hey, um. We need a. Motion.
I move to approve this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Second.
Mr. Hines, thank you, okay, uh. Mr. Black, are you in favor?
I am in favor.
Great, Mr. Brooks.
Representative Brooks is in favor.
Mr. Hines.
Hines votes yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
And Mr. Hartwell also, so thank you very much, that clears that. Um. You know. We, the next piece on the agenda actually is for Alex, but the last piece there is. Um, back to Jim, so Jim, do you, if you need to go somewhere, can we, would you like us to take this last?
Um. No, 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 I'm 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 all right, I'm actually in my house, so I don't go anywhere now, so.
All right, great, so then we'll go to um. We'll go to uh item four on the agenda. To consider and if appropriate, recommend to the RTM that it considers and approves. The following funding requests pursuant to the Recreation Department's required repairs. At Veterans Memorial Park and Foot Memorial Park. Uh so, from the general fund. Contingency seventy thousand dollars out and capital projects receiving seventy thousand dollars. And from Fund Seven Hundred, which we'll find out in a moment what that is. Transfer in the seventy thousand and capital outlay improvements uh increased by seventy thousand. So um. Can Alex, would you like to tell us about this?
Yeah, did you uh um read the letter that was, that I did forward to the Board of Finance? Uh, to go along with it?
I didn't, I watched the Board of Finance meeting, but I have to admit that I didn't read the letter. Give, give us a highlight, please.
Yeah, so uh basically, um, there's two projects, one down at the. Um, at Foot Memorial Park. Um, and also one at Veterans Memorial Park, both. Um, have something to do with lighting, the ones specifically, I'll take Foot Park first. Um. Those, Foot Park is over fifty years old, and when those uh. Wires were put into the ground from the building. Underneath the slabs, and all the way out to the uh. To the sign to get us electricity for those uh tennis courts. They did by direct burial, and um. So, uh obviously, he had, we had some issues with uh, you know, just over these years, if they weren't in conduit. Uh, it wasn't going to be protected, so this is going to now.
Maybe they just dropped him in the ground?
Yes.
Direct burial, all right.
Right, so now um, we were, you know, we had to go through some slab down there, not as much as we thought, but we have to. Um, about two hundred seventy feet, uh go all the way from the building, if you know where the, you obviously. I know you're aware of it, where the restrooms are.
That's right, yeah.
And come all the way out toward the um. Entrance sign is there, the big sign that says Foot Memorial Park.
Mm-hmm.
Just we did last year, uh that's uh. So we have everything okay going from that sign to the tennis courts, but. Uh which we had uh taken care of before, but we need to take care of. Uh the building, uh so they're gonna run a conduit line. Uh, and the wires out there so that we can have uh those uh fixed there, that's. That's on the Foot Park part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Veterans Park was a little bit different, it's a little bit more. Um. Again, all the other lighting and runs down at Foot Memorial Park are basically. Uh are all new runs of conduit and wire, and when we did the the splash pad, as well as when we did. Also, uh any of the lighting around the walkway, which was just before the town took over nine years ago. Uh, and all the uh changes we made with, uh we have an EV station down there, we. Completely did an overhaul of the electrical, uh with Foot Park funds, I may say.
Mm-hmm.
With uh taking care of all the electrical inside the building, so that we would have enough. Uh for even the future down the road, uh I bring in another service in with what we had there, so we kind of. Took all the guts with inside the building and and redid that. So this is the last piece uh of just trying to take care of of, you know, that part. Um, going up to Veterans Park now, it's a little bit more, um, it's it's. I, so anyways, what I'm saying is, it's just the tennis court lights specifically at Foot Park, uh nothing else. At Veterans Memorial Park, it's all the lighting. That we have now, which are about, uh in my letter, I talk, there's eighteen poles.
Mm-hmm.
And uh which include uh five in the parking lot, sixteen on the tennis court. Three in the playground, and two on the basketball court, so all the those wires over the years. Uh through uh just, again, that's uh, those are about forty, over forty years old. Those, again, either got some animals inside it, um. You know, whatever, whatever else happened there, and they also, I worked with the uh building inspector and also our electrical. Uh, the town electrical chief for us, uh that works, uh Dan, that. Banye that works with Tony and building. Uh is the, our electrical inspector, and we work with them. On making sure that all these, all these runs have to be, uh there has to be some excavation, so we have to go from pole to pole. With uh conduit, uh the good news, there's a little good news out of it, was that. Coming from the building underneath the slab, there was conduit. Uh from, but that, from that point on, there was a lot of direct burial, which we knew that back in nineteen ninety. Uh, when they put some of the lighting out, but. Uh, so we have to replace all that, if any of the wiring's good, we have to either uh take it out, put it back in. Run it through the conduit, and we have to go pole to pole to pole, so it was a little bit more um. A little bit more uh work that has to be done there, if I had to give you an idea of of the dollars that we're talking about. Um, well, it's it's seventy thousand dollars uh before you, and um. You know, so the, and then we also had to ground the wires back to the building, so again. Uh same situation, the good news is that. Every single light on the, on this project that we're taking care of, not the ball field lights, because that's still. Uh, part of uh the study that we did, and there might be a recommendation possibly coming in the future there. Uh, we have a roadmap there, uh if we're gonna, what else we're gonna do with the field up there. Uh if you look back in the plan, there's also uh possible standalone pickleball courts. And also, uh another, some more field lighting, but in the meantime. Uh this will take care of all what I told you about, and all, every single light up there, inside the building, outside the building. There are, you know, there's so so some more lighting within the utility room, the restrooms, the office. And the garage on the outside and inside the building, this all is inclusive. The good news is that every single light works, so all the LED lighting works. So we have to um, uh this will kind of finish that part of the project. That will give us, uh that'll be done um the correct way.
Great. Uh, one question that I have here is. Uh, cause I don't, I don't quite understand the movements here, contingency, out of contingency, and into capital projects. But then we're talking about Fund Seven Hundred, so is this seventy thousand dollars total, or is it seventy thousand dollars for each project?
Total.
Total, okay.
Both projects, seven, seventy thousand dollars for both projects to make them whole.
To make, so, okay, so it's not seventy thousand in one park, seventy thousand in the other, it's seventy thousand altogether.
Correct.
Right, okay. Uh, any other questions from the committee? Josh?
Uh, Director Pelusi, will this um. I I know this makes it whole at Foot Park, so I'll leave that one out, but does this? Uh, is this a Band-Aid in Vets Park, or will this make that upper section that you speak of whole?
Yes, what you just said, it'll make the upper sec, the upper section of those, all those lights I mentioned. Um, whole, yes.
Can you explain what your question's about, Josh, because I'm not that familiar with Veterans.
Well, he he basically, Vets Park, you have. You know, the parking lot and the building. Uh, the lighting has never been, I I mean, the the lighting isn't a hundred percent, it's not terrible, but. So my question is, he said he's gonna add some lights and stuff, so my question. I broke, I broke back park into two sections. The upper section where the parking lot, building and playground are, and then the ball fields, which are. Used for softball and or soccer and whatnot, is it, is the bottom part of that park? And and he, he's not doing anything with those lights, like he said, but the upper part, so. My question is, or, or is this going to make the lighting sufficient?
Mm-hmm.
On the top part, rather than, uh and I'm not gonna address the bottom part.
Yes, yeah, yes. I don't know, if you've been up there lately, you'll, yeah, it 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 kind of looks like uh. Well, it's it's the brightest I've ever seen it up there, but it stayed, the good news about it. With the LED lighting, it stays within the, you know, the proximity of the courts, the basketball, the parking lot. So now it's even safer when people get out of soccer at nighttime, and we, you know. And they walk up to their parking light, uh those are, those are on photo cells, the good news, so. Uh for security and especially for the parking, when people come out, the. The two lights uh that you enter the parking lot, and the parking lights, there's one on the left, one on the right. Um, uh those, those are on a photo cell as well as the ones around the building, so there's some security. Up there, but yes, it will, it does make that whole upper part whole.
Great, all right, thank you, Peter.
Uh, thank you, John, um, Representative Black, uh to Jim or to. Alex, this basically what we're doing here is covering a cost overrun um for the entire project, I gather, and. What was the cost of the entire project? Or the two projects?
Oh, for, well, I can't really answer that, you mean, just, I mean.
Well, I mean, I think there's a couple of things, I think the uh.
You go to Jim.
Yeah, yeah, I I wouldn't, Jim Finch Finance Director, I wouldn't. Necessarily characterize this all as a cost overrun, because there's a lot of different parts to this. So, I think if we kind of go back, um, so. You you go back six years ago to the Energy Performance Contract, which is. Uh, the second part of number four. And that that was uh, was, sometimes we refer to it as the Honeywell Project.
Right.
And that was where we did uh a number of energy conservation measures at the town and the Board of Education. Uh, and then that was like a, a six million dollar uh project, roughly. And then we amended that probably about four years ago. Uh because, at that time in the capital budget. Uh, both Alex and uh Joe Carbone uh from the Board of Education had identified. Uh, the need for lighting projects, so then eighteen five oh three got amended. Uh, was, the authorization was increased, uh and that was to do the lights at the, at the football field and track. Over at the high school, and then to start doing some lighting upgrades over at Vet, over at Veterans Park. And as Alex said, the the lights uh in the tennis court area are are in. I think in the, in the course of that project, and Alex, you could say this seems uh an accurate representation to you. Is that. It's the, it wouldn't have been sufficient enough on the lower part that Josh is referring to, to really. Do it in a way that uh, uh would be uh worthy of a, of a lighting upgrade, it was kind of. Uh, replace, it would have been replacing lights that were already there, but uh but also there was a uh. Portable lights that would also be brought in, and so the focus that was on the, then shifted to the tennis court. And the parking lot, all of that was put in. Uh, but I believe, Alex, correctly if I'm wrong, that in terms of issuing the permit. Uh, the Building Department uh wanted to uh, to basically retrench that area. Uh, because as you mentioned, it it was, it was direct burial. Uh, so, so that aspect of it uh required. Some additional dollars, uh I think it's worth noting that the original eighteen five oh three project. You know, when that thing gets closed out, uh in terms of actual cash, there there's roughly about fifty thousand dollars, it's gonna come back to the general fund. But that project is 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 older, uh it has multiple revenue streams, uh. Kind of to uh Alyssa's point about certain capital projects, and and one of the earlier agenda items. That one had bond proceeds, uh that one had some pay as you go dollars. Uh, which we amended, I think, back when Tom Brockett was on the RTM, and then it also um had uh. A low interest, a no interest, rather, loan from a utility company, which has since been paid off, and also uh energy rebate, so. The thought was, when Alex had this dilemma, is let's, let's close out eighteen five oh three, rather than try to get into amending. Another bond authorization, let's just close that out, the good news is roughly fifty thousand is gonna come back to the general fund. Uh, piggybacking on what I said earlier about uh spending down some of the contingency dollars. You know, Alex, how much do you need? And the seventy thousand also included Foot Park, which would it would have never, which was never really part of the. Eighteen five oh three to begin with, so that's why sort of the overrun aspect is is probably. Uh. Not a hundred percent accurate, but it's a, it's probably an element, if you consider that had the trenching been done at tennis courts. Initially, I mean, maybe if it was done four years ago, it might be less, but um. So I don't know if it's that, there's a, there's a lot of moving parts, I guess, of what I'm saying, so it's hard to really. Characterize it that simply, I guess.
Yeah, and that's the least of the, that's the least of the dollars of going to uh, uh to Foot Park as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'll I'll move this, I just, at some point, maybe, Jim, you can draw a cartoon for me and with little buckets and arrows, et cetera. Dollars or coins going from one.
Uh, actually, actually, I think that'd be a good project for Alex before he retires.
Yeah, Alex is three feet out the door already.
If you get Jim to to draw such, uh, you know. A diagram, then it will be basically giving away all of his state secrets.
No, 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 I, no, I, it, uh, the uh. We we could probably piece something together, it's just that, there's different elements at different. We, we could probably piece something together, it's just that, there's different elements at different times, you, you know, so it's, uh. And the project scope changed in the middle of it, so there's, uh, there's a lot to unpack, so.
Okay, but you're saying, if I understood you correctly, that we're working with seventy thousand dollars here, but in addition. I thought I heard that there's fifty thousand coming back from closing out Project eighteen five oh three?
Yes.
Yes.
So, okay, cause that's not really noted, um, on the, um, on the. Transfer things that we got from, from the Board of Finance, which is, you know, good news, so then, basically, we're talking about twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, the, the, the twen- the fifty thousand coming back was in my letter to the Board of Finance, but.
Okay, but it wasn't, it's not here, and, and I'm, I'm working directly off of. You know, what they had in front of them, Board of Finance, rather than the, you know, the auxiliary, um, stuff, so. Alright, um, Peter has, uh, moved this, can I get a second?
I can.
Uh, I can second.
Okay, thank you, Elisa, um, any further conversation on this? No, so, Mr. Black?
Uh, Representative Black votes aye.
Yes, Rep- Representative Brooks?
Representative Brooks votes aye.
Representative Heinz? Representative Waterman?
Aye.
And Representative Hartwell is on board as well, so thank you very much, let's move on to the last item on the agenda. To consider and if appropriate, recommend to the RTM that it considers and approves the following transfer from the Finance Director as follows. Taking five thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars out of contingency and applying it to overtime, uh. Mr. Finch?
Sure, okay, so, um, basically, in order to get the, uh, twenty twenty-three audit, uh, done. Uh, we encountered some, uh, challenges, uh, first with the tax office, but. Uh, and then we had resolved those, and then, um, as we were moving along, um. We encountered some issues at the Board of Education, and so, uh, in order to. Address those, we had conversations with, you know, Board of Ed folks and the auditors, and, um. It became clear to me that probably the best person to tackle what needed to be done at the Board of Ed, because she does it for the town. Uh, was, was Catherine, and so, and Catherine, uh, is an assistant department head, so. Uh, like many of, of the assistant department heads, and even, in fact, some department heads. Uh, she's covered by a collective bargaining agreement, uh, the collective bargaining agreement basically, uh. Allows her to earn compensatory time off, uh, and it also provides that if that time cannot be taken. Uh, that it, that is to be paid out, and so, uh, if Catherine's working at the Board of Ed. And earning compensatory time, she's not working in the Town Finance Department, so, uh, the most logical thing. Uh, was, was to basically pay her for her time, uh, and then monitor to make sure that she doesn't get too burned out, so.
Right, okay. Um, any question?
I move to approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Representative Black seconds.
Thank you, Representative Black, any other, any other questions or comments? Aye, hearing done, Representative Black?
Aye.
Aye, Representative Brooks?
Representative Brooks says aye.
Representative Heinz? Did I, I hear an aye there, Representative Heinz?
Oh, he's on mute.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
Thumbs up, maybe, thumbs.
Chris, you still there? Okay, Representative Waterman?
Yes.
And Representative Hartwell is a yes, and, um. If this, oh, there he is, Representative Heinz?
I vote yes.
Thank you so much, sir, okay, so again, it's five to nil, um, we have finished the, um. The agenda for this evening, we.
John, John, can I ask one quick question before you guys go?
Of course.
You, you know, cause I know you were splitting items before, uh, item four, to close out Project eighteen five oh three. Uh, when you guys voted on four, so that included the resolution, the Project eighteen five oh three. Energy conservation be closed out and all surplus funds remaining in the project be returned to the general fund, that, that was. That was part of four.
That was part of, in my mind, it was, and I.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, I.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't read that out, and so thank you, that's, that's a good clarification, thank you.
Well, I would like to amend my vote that that fifty thousand comes to me, if that's possible.
So how much food does that bird eat?
Quite a lot.
Jim's gonna take us all the lunch in, in, uh, Rio, uh, so.
Yeah. Actually, I, I, it's, it's gonna be for Alex's retirement. Gold watch for Alex.
One comment, John?
Yes.
Um, yeah, so, again, yeah, thank you to the committee, uh, for the, um. Uh, for the, for the vote, if I'm not incorrect, if I read today that it won't be heard this Wednesday, uh. The meeting won't be till the twenty-third, right now?
That's, that's correct.
Alright, so this will be heard on the twenty-third, which is a couple of weeks now, two weeks from tomorrow, or Wednesday, I guess.
As I understand it, though, it's tentative that day, there's nothing set in stone, so. Tentatively, it will be heard that day, but it definitely will not be heard in two days.
Exactly.
But there's not a possibility that'll go to November, correct, or am I wrong on that, so?
I, I think this, I, I think the possibility is very, very low, I think that the twenty-third is the date that. But, but it's not yet official.
Okay.
Alright, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, this Representative Black, so moved.
Thank you.
Representative Brooks seconds.
Thank you so much, do we have, we don't have to have a roll call vote on that, do we?
Yeah, aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you very much, everyone, for, uh, making time this evening on a special, uh, event. Rather than the regular one, uh, appreciate your time, and, uh, I'm going to stop the recording now. And we're going to go away.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye bye, good night.